Good evening, we have a forum at 6:30, we'll call the planning board meeting to order. And since we have nobody in the waiting room for general information, we could just get on with our little points of discussion. Did you send out the post office information to everybody, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Not that we can do anything, but we just gotta make note that when we, we gotta clarify, does that include any subdivision?
As I read it, it's any new subdivision. And I do happen to know that they've, they're applying it to the, the new one off the Shattuck Road.
Oh, they are, okay.
It's going to, it's going to create some interesting problems. Right now, most of us have a mailbox. And it is in the, it's within the limits of the public way. You know, they're, they're in the layout of the street.
Right.
That's fine, you know, one mailbox, you know, nothing unless you reinforced it like a tank, it's not a danger to anyone. It's not a major imposition. But I'm seeing several problems. I know what the, what the proposed ones look like, I've seen them here and there. Anyone who goes through North Hadley, you'll notice there's a multi-party mailbox in front of the, the house across from North Hadley Hall. Which is a fairly substantial piece of metal and concrete. So, we're introducing, I think a road hazard. There will also be a question of, whose property is it going to be on? Some of our subdivisions are sort of classic subdivisions, if you will, the, the road, with squares going out into a field. Like the one, next to you, Jim. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where they put it. And then they'll have people parking, getting out of their cars, accessing it.
What happens if it gets clobbered? Whose responsibility and cost is it to replace it?
Well, I suppose initially, it would be an amenity that the developer would put in, but once the developer is gone, I guess it's on the, it's like every subdivision going forward is going to have to set up a neighborhood association to pay for something like this.
Yeah, those mailboxes are not very big either.
I would, I would suggest, and I don't know if we can enforce that, that they always have them on the exit lane of the subdivision. So that if you queue up for your mail, you queue up on your, on the subdivision property, not out onto the street.
Good idea.
And maybe, and maybe we could make subdivisions have a little pull-off lane. So that you can get over to the mailbox and not block the exit lane of your, you know.
If you want to see one, just come by East Street Commons, I mean, it's here.
Yeah.
Most people tend to walk to it to get a little exercise, but and there's not that much maintenance to it, it's, you know, it's up off the curb.
Is yours in the median?
Yeah, yeah. It's common property, but the whole thing's common property, you know?
Right.
Well, and you have a condo association, so you have a structure.
Yeah, they're not exactly, they're not doing anything to it right now, I mean, the only thing that's been done is it's been painted, there's really no maintenance, you gotta sweep up once in a while and shovel out the snow. But they're, they're, it's in a little cabana.
Is that a?
It is, it is common property.
That's interesting.
You do have, if you drive up, you do have to get out of your car to go to get the mail, but there's never, never people backed up, I mean, the mail comes here at about 1:00, 1:30, 2 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not very concerned about people backing up, you know, getting, I mean, it's not like you're gonna have a, a 50 lot subdivision where you're gonna have tons and tons of the stuff.
No.
Most of the subdivisions are gonna have, what, ten or a dozen lots on it, so it won't be so bad. But it's, you know, this, this, if it gets hot, if it gets hit, it's, it's where my concern is, you know, to set up a neighborhood association to take care of, to pay for a new one, that's gonna be, that could be a bit of an issue.
It, it'd almost be impossible to hit ours, but I guess it'd be possible. Not probable, but possible.
Well, yeah, but yours in the median, but most of them are not gonna have a median to put it into. It's gonna be like, you know, off to one side, either the entrance or the exit of the street.
We're not gonna be the first town that's gonna be wrestling with this issue, so we'll ask Ken to search around and we can, we can ask friends and neighbors too, how their town handles it.
Well, we may actually be among the first because that Colony Estates got hit with this. And we've already approved them, it's not like we can go back and reopen it. Because, because of this, I suppose, with the, upon the request, but lots are already being sold out of there, so yeah, I, it's sort of a question of, you know, who owns what, in Colony at least. You remember there are, well, maybe you won't, but there are some irregular little flaps, little blobs of land on each side of the road at the, right up at the intersection with, in fact, I can pull that up, I think, let me just see. At least there's a place to, a place to put it. But it still gets into the question of who owns it.
Who takes responsibility, who clears it, who maintains it?
Well, yeah, who clears it, I meant, who's, who's responsible for plowing it? We did get an email that I sent around to everybody.
The DPW, you know.
A DPW doesn't want to be responsible for it.
Potato, not mine.
And, and nor should the DPW be responsible for it.
Okay, I'm going to screen share now. And.
That's a good question, is that our responsibility if we approve a subdivision, that we make sure that they, they meet their legal rights for things such as that, or that's, that's something legislated by, it's not our jurisdiction, really.
Yeah, it's one of those things that's subject to approval of others if and as required.
Right, right.
So with Colony, he has this parcel A down here. And a landscape and maintenance easement up here. So, per your suggestion, you know, parcel A could, it could be mounted on parcel A.
Yeah.
Of course, I suspect the post office would rather it be mounted, you know, to, to service parcel A, the, the mail truck has to come, turn around and come back.
That's, that's what they get. When they have an unfunded mandate, they get what they get.
They got, they got doors on both sides of the mail truck, you can get out of either side.
I guess.
He, he may have a, you know, a dime turning radius with his LLV.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm worried about things like who's, how, how is the snow gonna get cleared? Who's responsible if a homeowner attempts to climb over an unreasonable pile of snow before it gets cleared? And within the condo, it's part of clearing the walks, but.
There were walks here, yeah. Basically, you walk down the street and you go to the mailbox and, you know, you might have a little slush along the way, but the roads are generally cleared.
Okay.
When was this one approved?
May 5 of 2018.
And that was before me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like John Michkowski at top.
Right, and I did not participate in this one.
So what was the little dipsy-doo at the end? That was like to keep you from firing down the street? That's a little slowdown curve, that's interesting. Oh, I guess it gives you the 90-degree angle.
Yeah, it gives you the 90-degree angle to Shattuck Road, which itself is like a 45-degree angle.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
There's a detection pod there too, Mark.
Oh, is there? Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know, is that on parcel A or B or?
Yes, parcel A.
So.
Yeah, there's, there's just a little one there, most of it, most everything drains to the back. But yeah, there's a little rise and there is a detention structure in there. So, I'll, I'll just pass along that I've been in contact with the developer and he has been getting absolutely nowhere with the, the post office, you know, he's trying to make the point that the, you know, the, the people are being discriminated against here, they're getting lesser service than anyone else in a similar situation off of Shattuck Road at least. So.
I were the developer, I would argue, but, you know, he, he doesn't want to spend the money, but, you know, he could say, I laid this out just to sell lots before, and now you're changing this after I've had this all approved. You know. He might have a, he might have a chance at a class action suit there, but I don't think one developer on their own is gonna budge the USPS train.
No. That is true, it is probably going to, it would probably, and I'm not speaking for any one developer, but it probably is more cost-effective to set up a, this, this mail station and then it is to fight over it, but once you set it up.
Yeah, you get trouble down the road for years.
Then you're out of here and it's not like a property owner is going to, let's say, the owner of lot one probably is not going to be raising his or her hand to take over parcel A. And whatever liability goes with it. So, I, I think it is something that we will, I think that's all we need of that, it is something that I, I hope Ken has some thoughts on it.
Mike, with yours, do people tend to, did you say that people usually walk to it, or do they stop?
Yeah, they walk to it, it's, I mean, it's not like it's an active place, okay?
And there's, there's several, right? There's one for the front cluster and one for the rear.
No, no, there's, there's just one, and you've got, you've got a mailbox for each person, each, each house, and then down below, you've got four larger boxes to take parcel, big, larger parcels.
Right.
And they stick a key in your mailbox if you got a parcel.
Right.
It's kind of a socialization way to meet, meet people. Millie, Millie, what's your name? Millie Matusko and somebody else walked there every day. I see him walking and it's kind of.
But the, the thing with that one, Mark, is they've got a, they've got a association that is responsible for snowplow, it's they clear it out routinely.
But it's, you know, there's nothing to clean out, really, you, you might get a little snow in there, but not much, but they, they plow right up to the curb, you get to the curb, I pull my car up there, get out of the car, get my mail and come back to my house, you know, it's.
We're gonna have to kind of wait and see how it works out with the first one.
Devil's in the details.
So the situation on Colony Drive is that the town is plowing it.
Right.
But they're only plowing the roadway.
Yeah.
And speaking of what you said earlier, Jim, when you were, you were down in Boston area, Linda and I went to Boston today. They have not finished clearing the, the, the full, we were on Star Drive and there's,
Okay.
one exit off Star Drive is supposed to be two lanes, and everybody knows it's two lanes, but they've only cleared one lane of snow.
Okay.
So you have people kind of confused about what.
Well, it was probably, it would've been considered sexist if they cleared two.
Well, of course, you know, I was out in Franklin and Foxborough area and then in Warwick, Warwick, Rhode Island, so that means, oh, that's a whole lot more suburban, if you would, than Boston, if Boston proper by any stretch.
Yeah.
But, but you know, here clearly when they're plowing, they take care when they go by there. If you got the town coming in with a big snowplow, they're just burying that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, Bill and, Bill and I both lived in Boston before, Bill lived there when he went to college, I lived there for a while when I worked there. And when they plow snow, boy, if some, way back when we were there, back in the seventies, if something was in your way, it may not be in your way too long.
And if you were, if you were on, if you were not on an emergency route, you could leave your car, but not only do you have to deal with all the snow that came down, but you have to deal with all the snow that was plowed, so they'll, they'll plow down the middle and you might pile it up on cars on both sides.
You might lose a mirror too.
Yeah, and if, and if it was a few days and you got a little bit of rain, you now had a, you now had to chip your car out of about two feet of ice.
Well, then you shovel the space out, you leave, then you put a chair there and somebody takes your chair and tosses it. And use your parking place and.
That's, that's how you make friends.
I know.
I lived in Somerville for.
Okay, so I mean, we're just gonna have to wait and see on the post office, on the, on the mailbox stuff and you know, it, no, no, that's gonna be someplace like a mall is gonna have common mailboxes too, that's the intent, I believe, Bill?
Yes, it seemed to say that new, new and renovated buildings, say, you know, that, that's been the case for a while though. And our office building does not have individual delivery. I mean, they, everybody in our building has a post office box, but that's because we almost share a parking lot with the post office. But I think that's what they're planning on for other parcels as well, and I'm not sure that that hasn't already happened. I don't know what the, I haven't taken a look, but the little multipurpose, two multipurpose buildings on the south side of Route 9, you know, around, call it 225 Russell Street, where there's dentist office in there, I don't know what they have, but I assume they probably do not have, they, they probably do have central, a central delivery area.
Yeah. Okay. What else do we have? I have nothing else.
I don't really have anything else either. You know what? Jim and I have to get together talk about support staff and policies for that.
Any, any news on the Goodwin building and what our future might be going there? Is, is the MBC still working on that or?
Well, they got a plan for it. But the problem is funding to do what, for the funding to meet the plan, you're talking some very expensive things. And I'm, I don't want to put money, no, I don't want to put a number out there because I don't want to get it all blown out of proportion. But it's, it's pricey and with the conditions of the town, they're just kind of hesitant to be trying to expend that kind of money when we're extremely watching our pocketbooks.
Is there anyone that in town that could apply for a community development block grant or anything like that to preserve that building and make it retrofitted to, you know, there's, there's, there's money out there. You know, there are people who know how to go after that.
Well, if you can get a line on anybody who might be able to help and at least give that name to Carolyn, the town administrator, that would be, that would be helpful. One thing that's been discussed a little bit is that we had initially been talking about having our files in the basement for, and of course, that'll have to be climate control to some extent, we'll need to at least have dehumidifiers running down there so we don't mold everything. But perhaps not, perhaps using the community room in the library rather than you, the, it's gonna take a, a lot of work to get even the first floor of Goodwin handicapped accessible. There's a ramp, there's no elevator and there are no toilet facilities, not even water on the, on that, that floor. Whereas there is a, apparently a very well-equipped meeting room in the library, which is just across the driveway between the two buildings, and apparently it has electronics in there that people have not yet begun to assess.
So, I would hope that they have like a phase one, phase two, like phase one is adapting what's there and phase two would be what you were saying was that costly addition on the north side with the stair, the, the elevator and the bathrooms, right? That's, I think I, I've seen that plan.
Yeah, the only architect on the committee has resigned.
That was David, yeah.
David. So, and I'm not suggesting you rush over to volunteer, but I have not actually, I, I follow the meeting schedules fairly closely, I haven't seen that they've even had a meeting recently.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Bill.
You know, I know a lot of the function, a lot of the attention at town hall, the bandwidth is on budget right now. So, there's no one pushing to, to do this.
Any ideas or predictions what's gonna happen with the governor and Zoom meetings in April, Bill?
I've heard not a peep.
Okay.
I saw that Amherst, the Amherst Town Council recently had a, a motion to, to go to remote meetings, which was defeated. They are meeting partially in person, partially by Zoom with the doors closed to the public. So the public can attend by Zoom, they have, I don't know how many town councilors they have, call it 15. 10 of them are sitting in a room with masks on and five of them are zooming in. And the ones who are zooming in are saying you can't tell who's talking among the people who are there.
That's truly hybrid.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I just haven't heard a word and I guess there was a suggestion that perhaps we should contact our state legislators.
You know, someone might say about some politicians, how do you know when they're talking?
You can see their lips move, with a mask you can't see.
I guess, how do you know they're saying something?
Can't tell which side of the mouth they're talking in.
Yeah, exactly.
Any news with the Eslon parking, everything's been fine there, and anything new with Mr. Michelson, he's, is that withdrawn or still?
I drove by, I drove by.
That's a lot I go by there routinely and I have seen absolutely nothing, they're doing an excellent job of keeping the parking on their parcel.
That's good, well, I give a shout out to Joyce Chungla, that was a.
Mr. Michelson has, as in our one meeting, he did withdraw with a condition that when he does apply, you know, we have to pay for the legal notice and the mailing, so there'll be no filing fee, and that's fine. He's got, I think he asked for, was it five-year window on that bill, something like that?
60 months.
60 months, five years, so that's, you know, that's all fine.
Okay.
Let's see, we did get a, I think, did you send out a thing on the batteries to everybody, Bill? The solar batteries.
Yeah, what about, what, what thing?
The, the decision from town council on solar battery?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't seen it, I, I have been out, let me see, did he?
I thought you, you gave it, I thought you sent it to me.
He and I talked yesterday. But he may have sent you something. I'm, I don't see anything from him.
I thought.
I sent him, I copied you on the request for an opinion.
Yeah.
And I did talk with him yesterday. And I am not seeing anything from him to the planning board address. I am seeing a lot of a lot of things in my junk folder for planning board that are not junk. So I'm not sure what's happening there. But I, I don't see anything from Jeff Blake or anyone in his office.
Should we be prepared to perhaps take this as a zoning article to town meeting?
Yes. We should, we should discuss it, it, it's not up for discussion, but I think I am going to add a, I'm going to add to our standing agenda town meeting zoning articles. So we can discuss what we, what we want to bring forward. So, I, yeah, I, I suspect what I will do when we, if you have, think you have something from Jeff Blake?
No, no, I, it was, I was actually reading, I was reading by mistake, I thought it was, it was actually Tom Quinlan's re, re, letter that I was reading, not, not the reply from town council.
Okay. I will share that as soon as it comes in and I will also share it with the applicant when it comes in.
Okay.
It will affect, it seems like it will affect how we proceed next week or two weeks.
Are you gonna share it simultaneously with the applicant before we have a chance to look at it and comment on it?
Yes, I think, there's no, okay, it is the opinion of town council. So, we asked for the opinion, we got the opinion, it is what it is.
It's, it's a public document at that time, I'm just curious.
Yes, it is, unless it comes with a, unless they tag it as privileged.
Yes.
And we have, we have no basis for discussing whatever they come up with in executive session. So, pass it along when it arrives.
Okay.
So we have the battery storage in two weeks, we have Ken Comia in two weeks, and we have an administrative review
of the Wilga property.
Of the Wilga property.
Yeah.
We did have someone who sent in an approval not required plan. And I sent that around to everybody, but I also sent them a link to tonight's meeting and they they didn't make it, so now follow up with them tomorrow perhaps, tell them they can come to our next meeting.
Do you, do you have that planned, Bill? Could you just bring it up so we can look at it and think it over? We probably shouldn't discuss.
Shouldn't discuss it without the applicant, but nevertheless, just to.
Uh, sure, let's see.
On another note, while you find that. I've been holding uh Zoom meetings at home for a volunteer effort I'm doing and. One of the volunteers on our committee is deaf or mostly deaf and she pointed out to me. Um, I happen to have the the UMass Zoom account, so it has the all the bells and whistles that they has a live transcription. Which then, you know, it's like having the closed caption at the bottom that um. I wonder if that's something that we should, you know, I'll, maybe I'll bring that up at my. You know, diversity, equity and inclusion, but it might be something that town meetings might want your. Meeting, municipal meetings might want to consider. I'm assuming that whatever Hadley Media has or whatever the town Zoom. Count is, they probably have that, that feature.
I do not see that feature.
It should be down at the bottom right where there's the three dots and you click. Uh, three dots at the bottom right on my version on my other computer and then there's options for live transcript and uh. No?
No, on my main screen, my uh. My lower right is a big red end button.
Okay.
And uh.
No, but yeah, at at the right end of all your menus on the bottom, there should be, at least on mine. The version I have from UMass, there's three dots, which is like, you know, others, other.
No, I, I do not have anything other reactions, recorded reactions for my last two buttons.
Okay, alright.
So it may be uh, we do not have the.
The pro version, maybe?
The pro version um. We just check preferences uh.
We have a, we have a sign language person at the town meeting, right? In the, yeah, on the front.
Yes.
Yeah. Wasn't it at the Olympics once that they had some guy that was a fraud that was pretending to be the sign language guy just to be up there on the stage and. He didn't know what he was doing with his. That was like ten.
I think you're right.
That was like, it was like ten years ago, that was. There's an idiot in every orchard.
Okay, no, I do not see a way to access it, but let me add that to the list and I can ask Jennifer.
Okay. Well, if we're trying to trim the budget and that's a more expensive version, we probably won't, but. And I don't know of anyone who's complained, but.
Uh, I tell you, I've been to some meetings and I find it very distracting when you're, is there. It's like having, you know, this interpreted in Spanish. The bottom or something.
No, I know. My, my partner and I are always arm wrestling during the movie, captions on, caption off. I'm like. It's blocking part of the.
Yeah.
So let's see, I'm not, okay, yes, there it is, so. Okay, I have found it.
What was the subdivision for the A and R?
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out why I cannot access it.
The number is what, thirty-two, Russell?
One thirty-two.
One thirty-two, Russell.
Okay.
Yeah. You want to give me a screen share, Bill? I'll try to call lineup, see if it opens.
Yeah, let me just uh, I I just have a. Spinning beach ball at the moment, so uh. Asking it to do too much at once, I guess.
That's asking a lot of bandwidth on the north end of town.
Well, if you can't pull it up, uh, where where is one thirty-two, Jim?
This is a corner of of Russell Street and Goth Street.
Yeah, isn't there like a dentist's office or something there?
No.
You muted yourself, Bill.
Which one's Gotham, which one's Whaley?
Uh, Goth is further east.
Okay.
I think that's like a cross from Hopkins, isn't it?
Alright.
Okay, Jim, you can share now.
Whaley's were. Which one is where subs- subjects.
Did that work?
That's golf.
Can you see it?
Yes, we.
The subdivision?
No, uh, actually.
I'm not seeing it.
I can see it now.
They want two lots out of that. So when they do appear, if you know, if you can't pull it up, it will just give us an opportunity to drive by it and. Take a snapshot in our mind's eye.
Okay, yeah, there was a house on the south lot and there was a barn or garage on the north lot.
Okay, I was, I've been able to pull it up, so let me see if I can share it.
I open, I don't know why mine doesn't share. I've gotta be doing something wrong here.
Comes, here we go.
So the. Video parlor and tattoo place are down here. Sebs is over here. This is a um.
Office building, right?
Building, I think there's a house right about here.
Yeah.
And then the dentist, former dentist's office is over here.
Okay.
And then um.
Then there's the.
Greenfield Bank is here and uh Dunkin' Donuts is here.
Got it, got it.
So I will enlarge it a bit and. So it seems to have. More than a hundred and fifty feet frontage on each side of the corner lot, hundred and eighty-nine feet of frontage on lot two. Hundred and seventy feet of depth, so the square will fit on either one.
Yeah, I mean, seems to me zoning, so.
Well, we're not sure because uh. I, is it one seventy-five foot frontage and uh it's a corner lot?
Yeah, it's a hundred and eighty feet of frontage on uh.
Roth Street.
Off and a hundred and sixty-four feet of frontage on Russell Street.
Okay, how about lot two?
Hundred and eighty-nine feet of frontage on Goth.
And one seventy in depth.
Does it have this total square footage?
But they're both, they're over thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so. Gotta tear the burn down probably, but that's.
Well, to put a house to the probably probably have to come down, but that, I don't think that barn's in great condition if I remember.
I I believe you're correct.
So.
Well, it'd be good to start reclaiming this area. Some of the buildings on Russell Street, I mean uh. On Railroad Street are just horrible graffiti and.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, down at, down at Wally, there's a bunch of graffiti.
So we'll take that up at our next meeting. So.
Okay, it looks like we prolonged the meeting long enough to justify our fifty cents an hour.
Anything new was on the state and the highway, the Route nine?
Well, I know that, I mean, uh, there, from what I have heard, and that's not a lot, the state is slowly moving forward. But they haven't gone, I don't know they've gone off for any bidding or anything yet. I don't know how many properties they've actually. Done something with as far as easements and stuff.
Yeah, looked like exotic, um, vacated theirs.
I I believe they have filed all of their takings. And they are paying, making payment as uh as warranted. Um, I believe they may have some contracts out to bid or some contracts. I'm not quite sure how it works. But it looks like they will be underway.
Okay, I noticed that they're gonna have quite a few wetlands filings too, aren't they? There's a whole lot of culvers they're gonna be dealing with.
I believe they did work their way through a lot of those already.
Okay.
There was uh just about the time. When the select board declined to reappoint Collette. They were in the middle of hearings on um. With uh the DP, uh, the Mass Highway Consultants.
Okay.
So that would have been um. What, last, last spring?
No, la- last fall, I think, was, whoa, no, I don't know when that was. I think it was in the late summer.
Okay. So yes, that was definitely, uh, that was underway at that point.
Okay.
Because there was an issue about whether there were enough people. What the, there was some changes, there was an intent to change the size of the Conservation Commission uh. There was a question about whether there were enough people present to actually vote and. Because we had adopted the ru- um, the statute that said someone who misses. A meeting can um view it and certify that they are up to speed. People were able to come back. Or I guess uh someone who wasn't at the meeting was able to uh was able to act.
Is that a new member, Bill? Is that your paralegal?
Yes. Mac, Mac and Macy remind me, um, you know, they're they're uh. They are as effective as the timer on my uh iPhone. They remind me of breakfast, lunch and dinner. Very reliably.
That's great.
I can't cheat. If I come home early, she thinks it's dinnertime.
We've already been fed. I fed them early because of uh the meeting, but.
Or make a mess of their schedule, huh?
So that she's just, she's just lobbying to see if uh she can get me to cough up some more food. And then they do annoying things. And then sometimes, but when they reach out to touch you, it's like a hem, a hem.
I'm here, don't forget me. Okay, um, well, I have nothing else. Anybody have anything?
Nope, nope.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, aye? Meeting is history, thank you and thank you, John.
I think Mac is in agreement too.